Good evening and welcome to the February 25th, 2016 Regular Monthly Meeting. At this time, I'd ask you to stand for a moment of silence and afterwards, the Chair will recognize Dr. Bracy.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome to our Thursday, February 25th School Board Meeting. Delighted to have all of you here with us this evening. As we look at the agenda, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I would like to call from Parkview Elementary School, James E. Musgrove IV, and providing the statement, Caleb M. Leggins from Parkview as well. Would you all come down? As they come, I would like to read some background information on each of them. James Emanuel Musgrove IV is a first grade honor roll student at Parkview Elementary School. James achieved a perfect attendance on his PALS test last fall. He was promoted from kindergarten to first grade because of his academic achievement. He's a member of the All-City Course and Show Choir. James is an avid reader and his reading level is well above his grade level. He has successfully passed 53 AR tests during the school session. James participates in the Deep Creek Baseball Association and is starting his fifth season of baseball. He is very interested in meteorology and geography and has memorized all his state capitals, world flags, and continents. He wants to become a meteorologist when he grows up. Like his mother and father, James plans to attend Old Dominion University. His parents are James and Wanda Musgrove. Would you all please stand, Mr. and Mrs. Musgrove? Next, we have Caleb. Let me make sure I get this right. Mikayel? Okay, thank you. Leggins. He's a third grade honor roll student at Parkview Elementary School. He has received several recognitions, including the Superintendent's List. Very good. Student of the Month and two trophies for his perfect performance on the PALS test. This is his third year as a participant in the All-City Course and his first year in the Show Choir. Caleb enjoys reading, playing video games, visiting the park, and spending time at the library. He also takes karate lessons. Caleb is a first purple belt in the Tiger Stand and Defend Program at Tiger Martial Arts, where he placed first in the division and the inner-school tournament. His short-term goals are to achieve straight A's for the year, to take place in the upcoming Science Fair, and to receive a trophy for perfect attendance this year. Caleb plans to attend Harvard University and pursue a career in the Navy upon his graduation. Caleb's mother is Ms. Shamika Leggins, Ms. Leggins, and any other family members, would you all please stand at this time? At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Gwendolyn A. Watkins, Principal, and if Ms. Cheryl D. Wilson is here, Assistant Principal, come forward at this time.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, and guests. It is my pleasure to have the students from Parkview Elementary School, James Musgrove IV, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Caleb Leggins will share some information about our school. Ashley McFatten and schoolmates will recognize School Board Appreciation Month. I would also like to acknowledge the parents and staff members joining us this evening. Will you please stand? Thank you very much.
My name is James Musgrove. I am a first grade student in Ms. White's class at Parkview Elementary School. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, and special guests. Good evening.
Good evening.
Educating children requires the wholehearted cooperation of parents, teachers, administrators, and all of the individuals involved in the process. Parkview Elementary pledges its full devotion to providing each student with a first-class education. Through commitment, through educational excellence, dedication, and hard work, we will reach our desired goals for success as lifelong learners and as productive future citizens. There is never a dull moment at Parkview Elementary, for Parkview is truly the place to be. I would like to share with you a few of the programs and activities out there at our school throughout the year. Celebrity Reader is an annual event that affords parents, members of the community, and individuals from surrounding areas an opportunity to be guest readers for kindergarten through grade six. This year, we had over 65 guests read to the students on Friday, February 12. Through a partnership with the Academy of Music, we have had a string program at our school for 18 years. Students in grades three through six have an opportunity to learn how to read music and play string instruments. The Academy of Music presents a gift of a violin to two deserving students annually. Parkview has had a chapter of a national elementary honor society for seven years. Students are recognized for outstanding academic achievement, outstanding citizenship, and demonstrated personal responsibility. This year, we plan to promote reading through the Read Crest Program, sponsored by Renaissance Place. The students are gearing up with books from their home, their classrooms, and our school library. The Parkview Science Fair will be held on March 15. Students will be awarded trophies, ribbons, and certificates for their participation. Our students will learn how to lend a helping hand by attending a workshop during our February PTA meeting. Career Day is always terrific. People from the community come out to share their expertise and to discuss their career choices. They help motivate and guide us into careers that we might have not thought of pursuing. We have monthly PTA meetings. Parents, teachers, and students have an opportunity to get to know each other. We even have designated grade levels to present skills to enhance what we are learning throughout the school year. This year, the PTA sponsored a fundraiser and some of us were fortunate enough to have a special party. Coast Guard and the U.S. Navy from Portsmouth Medical Center serve as volunteers. We also have volunteers from Portsmouth's Fourth Baptist Church and Delta Sigma Theta Society Incorporated. They help us by making donations and by tutoring. Parkview partners with Food Lion to sponsor a math night to provide fun-filled math activities for the entire family. After a year of teaching and learning, we end the school year with Field Day. Volunteers engage students in physical activities as they enjoy a day of food, fun, and laughter. We invite you to visit us at Parkview Elementary School. We are located at 260 Elm Avenue. Thank you for listening.
Very good.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, parents, and special guests. In recognition to School Board Appreciation Month, we thank you and present this gift for life-changing work on behalf of all students and employees of Portsmouth Public Schools.
Oh, thank you so much. Goodness gracious. Wow. Wow. Thank you all very much.
What would you say, Mr.?
Mr. Richard, if you'll remain down there for a few minutes, because we're going to recognize the robotics students. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. For those of you that arrived early, you had an opportunity to witness our robotics team out in the foyer, as they had the machines set up, going through some of the demonstrations that they actually perform in some of the competitions. And I just want to say that the work that the coaches and advisors has put into the students is definitely evident, because they maneuver those machines just like it's riding a bike to me. I mean, yeah, it's so truly amazing. And I want to recognize them for their exceptional work that they've done, the way that they have represented the school division, and we want to give them a small token to show our appreciation. And with that, if the team will come forward with the coach and advisor and Mr. Douglas, if you can sort of, I guess, introduce the team when they come forward, we would appreciate that.
Yes.
And while they're coming forward, any parents of the robotics team, if you all are present, would you all stand at this time, please? Thank you, parents.
Good evening. Over the past year, I've had the privilege of working with these 12 individuals that stand behind me. It has really been a joy to see them mature from where we started to where we are today. You may not know, early on in the robotics program, there were three different identities that each school would encompass: Wilson, Churchland, and Norcom. But we decided that we wanted to represent the city of Portsmouth in a different light by being one team. And so throughout this year, our motto has been "One Team."
One Goal.
All right. And so this year, our goal has been to represent the city of Portsmouth and to compete effectively at a high level. And so we recently were a part of the state championship up in Dawswell, Virginia, where we fell short in the end, but we truly had an outstanding season this year. And next year, we plan to be back champions. So I will introduce the team. Hunter Mines, Jordan Mutlow, Michael Crowe, Dominique Mason, Joshua Woodworth, Joshua Rydel, Patrick Mines, Trey Martin, Matt Jeffries, Ray Smith, and the one lady of the bunch, Barbara Toussaint.
And just to announce, the 19th and the 20th of March, there'll be a Churchland High School for the state, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so come on over. What time, hours?
Things start from 9:00 to 7:00 p.m.
From 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., 19th and the 20th. Okay, thank you all for coming down.
You don't get to go up. You get to stay with us. You know, we have tried to keep a secret, and I think we've done a very good job this evening. But we wanted to recognize our Chairman of our School Board, and I think your family members are all here tonight, so if you would stand. And Jim, would you recognize your family members for us, please?
This is Pastor Reverend Charles Peeven, Fourth Baptist Church, from the church on the corner. This is my son, John Bridgeford, from Aldisun, Aldisun, I live in Aldisun. This is my former wife, but she still gets it in and digging inside, make sure I don't forget. But I don't, we're still friends. This is my daughter-in-law, Jessica, bless her heart. My former sister-in-law, Mary, she won't let me forget that, I'm a brother-in-law. And this is my youngest granddaughter, youngest grand...
Let's see how we're gonna do. I guess the best way to do this. Special commendation citation presented to James E. Bridgeford in special recognition of his dedicated and sustained service to Portsmouth Public Schools, in grateful appreciation of his solid investment in our students' future well-being manifested by his leadership as Vice Chairman of this panel, July 1, 1992, June 30, 1996, as Board Chairman, July 1, 2004, January 14, 2016, and by the virtue of his tenure on this august body since July 1, 1990, and as a profound expression of the School Board's sincere appreciation of his unwavering commitment to the improvement of student performance during his 25th year, and an esteemed member of this body. And it is signed by all of the members of the Portsmouth School Board. Jim, you know, I was your Vice Chair for a couple of years, and I kind of like didn't know what the Chairman did, but I did know. And now that I know what you do, that it is a lot of work. And I'll tell you, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate working with you and what you have done for the children of Portsmouth. And this plaque is just a small token of our appreciation and that we wish you well. God bless you both. Thank you.
I'll keep it short, but I do appreciate it, because it's a light of sacrifice, but I enjoyed it, and it's for the kids. I quickly say I have 14,000, whatever the number is, that's how many kids I have, and I try to give it my all. I've enjoyed it. I'm not going anywhere yet. I still got eight or nine months to go before my term is up, but I thank you, I appreciate this. But I've had this unwavering support of the, especially my pastor, he'll ask me Sunday morning, what's going on, what can I do, and my family. You know, like I said, we're divorced, but we still hold an anchor with these right here. And I hope that won't change. But I've enjoyed working with all of you, and I'm going to continue to work with you. I know we all have our differences, and I'm still going to try to mesh and mend with all of each one of you, because it's going to take all nine of us to get the job done, as well as the Superintendent that we hired along with his staff. But that's all I'm gonna have to say for now, but thank you very much, I appreciate it. The mission of Portsmouth Public Schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Thank you, Mr. Bridgeford. The next item on the agenda is attendance. Board members, please indicate your presence by electronic vote. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk?
All members are present.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
It has been moved, and second, that we approve the agenda, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, board members, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is presentation, and this is recognition of the SBA School Board Appreciation Month. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. As noted on the agenda, in recognition of School Board Appreciation Month, I want to first, board members, if you didn't see, coming in, you see the beautiful plants, they're for you. Homegrown at Churchland High School. They came, they came a little early, maybe a month or so, but what we did...
Well, you've taken good care of them.
Well, when they came a month ago, they were very small. But you can see the beautiful work that our students did, and you see how they've grown and blossomed, so. And I know once you take them home, that you will continue to nurture, as our students did. But that's just a small token, and also, I would like to pass out these certificates to you as well, to say thank you for the job that you do, the time that you give for the students of Portsmouth Public Schools.
The next item on the agenda is presentation, Schools' Attendance Report for January 2016. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Wiggins forward, so that he can give us an update on our attendance with our schools. Mr. Wiggins, if you will.
I would simply remind you that we're always a month behind. The figures that we are going to present tonight reflect the end of January. And in recognition of School Board Appreciation Month, where we normally have the pictures of the schools and students, we've substituted the pictures of our school board members. So we're pleased to present the January 2016 Student Attendance Report. When we look at the student attendance for January, when we compare it with January 2015, it was 93.71 percent, and for the current year, it's 93.36 percent, reflecting a difference of 35 one-hundredths of a percentage point. We move next to the preschools. Last year, it was 91.9 percent, 91.09 percent, and for the current year, 91.40 percent, reflecting a difference of 31 hundredths of a percentage point. We move next to the schools themselves. Churchland Preschool came in first place, and it was the first time this school year, with 92.89 percent. And taking second place honors is Olive Branch Preschool with 91.59 percent. We move next to the elementary schools. Last year this time, it was 94.35 percent for the elementary schools. This year, it's 94.20 percent, and we had a slight decline in 15 hundredths of a percentage point. We next look at the elementary schools. Taking first place honors is Churchland Primary with, Churchland Primary and Intermediate with 96.36 percent. And in second place honors, James Hurst Elementary with 95.35 percent. We move next to our middle schools. Last year, it was 94.77 percent, and for the current year, 92.41 percent, reflecting a difference of 2 and 36 hundredths of a percentage point. Taking first place honors at the middle school level is Churchland Middle with 93.24 percent. In second place, William E. Waters Middle with 92.41 percent. We move next to our high schools. Last January, it was 93.39 percent, and for the current year, 93.30 percent, a slight decline of 9 hundredths of a percentage point. Taking first place honors is Churchland High School with 97.28 percent. And again, Woodrow Wilson came in second place with 92.16 percent. We next look at a summary of the averages. For the school division, it's 93.36 percent. For our preschools, 91.40 percent. For elementary schools, 94.20 percent. For our middle schools, 92.41 percent. And for our high schools, 93.30 percent. And obviously, we want to thank everyone involved in the process of getting our boys and girls to and from schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. The next item, the next item on the agenda is a resolution, National Youth Art Month. Dr. Bracy?
Mr. Wiggins, will you continue, please?
Yes, sir. At this time, I would invite Mr. Parent, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Bracy to join us, and also Laura A. Reagan from Churchland Elementary School. Ms. Reagan? As indicated, Ms. Reagan is an art teacher at Churchland Elementary School, and she has been with our school division for ten years. Resolution, whereas Youth Art Month is observed annually during March as a means of emphasizing the value of art and the development of our nation's young people, and as a means of soliciting continued support for high-quality instructional programs in art education. Whereas this yearly celebration helps youngsters develop a lifelong appreciation for and an understanding of the creative process, and whereas art significantly enhances the morale and quality of the school environment. And whereas the Council for Art Education Incorporated and Art and Creative Materials Incorporated have designated March as Youth Art Month and have selected the power of art as this year's theme. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board endorse the observance of Youth Art Month, provide a means for school personnel to support the purposes and practices of art education, and encourage teachers, students, parents, and all citizens to take cognizance of the importance of art education. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's permanent records, and that copies be sent to all schools and administrative offices within the division. And be it finally resolved that a framed copy of this expression be formally presented to an art educator at the school board's regular monthly meeting scheduled for Thursday, February the twenty-fifth, 2016.
What is the board's pleasure? A motion's been made and properly seconded. Would you please indicate by electronic vote? Madam Clerk? Oh.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
At this time, I would invite Mr. Joe L. Harmon III, the core director at I.C. Norcom High School. He's been employed by the school division for the last four years. Resolution, whereas the study of music contributes to the development of our young people through the acquisition of heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity. And whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of music types and active musical experiences, and whereas music and the other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment, and whereas the public schools of Portsmouth have primary responsibility for preparing and encouraging young people to assume a productive role in society. And whereas the National Association for Music Education has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month and has selected Music Inspires as this year's theme. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board endorse the observance of Music in Our Schools Month as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education, and that teachers, students, parents, and all citizens be encouraged to participate in this special recognition. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's permanent records, and that copies be sent to all schools and administrative offices within the division. And be it finally resolved that a framed copy of this expression be formally presented to a music educator at the school board's regular monthly meeting scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-fifth, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Being no discussion, board members, please indicate by electronic vote. Thank you, Dr. Whittaker. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Employee Appreciation Month. Dr. Bracy?
Mr. Wiggins, will you present that at this time, please?
Resolution of special recognition, whereas the concept of a free and equal education is an inherent American tradition and an essential aspect of our nation's strength, and whereas the public schools of Portsmouth are vital to society's success, and whereas we have a shared responsibility for academic excellence in Portsmouth, stimulating the minds, strengthening the bodies, and nurturing the noblest dreams of students we teach. And whereas the fine men and women of this school division have been and still are diligent guardians of the welfare of the young people entrusted to our care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board designate March 2016 as Employee Appreciation Month, and be it further resolved that this body extend its heartfelt appreciation to the dedicated corps of professional and support personnel who proudly give themselves in a selfish manner to provide high-quality educational programs and services for the young people enrolled in the public schools of this historic municipality. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's official minutes, and that copies be forwarded to all schools, administrative units, and city laboratories for public display.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. A motion's been made, it properly moved, and second, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, board members, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Parent. Before we go any further, I would certainly like to thank Parkview and the students that came and read and presented us with these wonderful gift baskets. And I also want to say to the public, do not believe people when they write or say that the children in Portsmouth Public Schools cannot read, because he was absolutely magnificent, and I see he is Harvard-bound. So certainly, I wanted to, I wanted to thank them before they left, but everything was going on. So I appreciate it, and I know the board does as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the January fourteenth, 2016, and January twenty-eighth, 2016 minutes. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
It has been properly moved, and second, that we adopt the minutes for January fourteenth and twenty-eighth. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion, public comment, non-agenda items. Madam Clerk?
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Ms. Lenisha Landrow?
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, school board members, Dr. Bracy, and all assembled here this evening. I come before you to bring to your attention the fact that a few of the Churchland High School Visual and Performing Arts Center of Excellence dance students represented Churchland High School and the Portsmouth Public School District wonderfully in Orlando, Florida at the Russell Athletic Bowl game with Baylor versus UNC this past December during our winter break. I know you are already made aware of their participation in the event from the time a few of the young ladies spoke before you at one of the school board meetings held April of last year, and possibly even from the publication in the currents concerning Churchland High School's dancers participating in the bowl game. We definitely appreciated the acknowledgement and encouragement received as the dancers prepared to partake in a wonderful opportunity. The Center of Excellence Dance students at Churchland High School work extremely hard at gaining knowledge in more than just dance technique, as one student stated in the High School Today magazine in October 2015. I did recently have parents this week discuss with me their state of confusion and frustration when they read and learned that Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth Public School was discussing paying off a debt that was accumulated as a result of Woodrow Wilson High School's band performers and non-performers partaking in a bowl game trip when there were Center of Excellence dance students who did not attend the 2015 Russell Bowl game due to lack of finances. Along with their concern that the dancers did not receive nearly the amount of recognition for actually participating in the kickoff and halftime bowl game performance as those who did attend the Tax Layer Bowl game with Woodrow Wilson High School. I did share with them that I understood their concerns and that I would bring it to your attention. When we were preparing for our 2015 Russell Athletic Bowl trip, each traveler had to pay anywhere from eleven-hundred-and-nine dollars to seventeen-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for the trip, depending on how many people were staying in a room. And although the costs did include few meals and ground transportation to and from scheduled events and classes, the travelers also had to pay for the rest of their meals and find transportation to Orlando, Florida, including myself. We originally had seventeen travelers totaling a cost of seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, which did not include the transportation to Florida or any additional cost for meals. One assistance was asked for paying even a portion of the remaining balance once we put, once we paid our deposit during the second semester of the 2014-15 school year. It was shared that the 2015 fiscal year money could not be spent on an event that was taking place during the 2016 fiscal year. We shared that there were required payments that had to be paid in installments during the 2015 fiscal year as well, but we received the same response and was told to try again at the start of the following fiscal year. By the time the start of the 2015-2016 school year began, we had lost six travelers due to insufficient funds. And after two payments and the new numbers of travelers, there was a remaining balance of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. We revisited the discussion of receiving assistance with our remaining balance at the start of the 2016 fiscal year, but we were told it could not be done. The remaining travelers did thankfully push forward and figured out how to make the rest of the payments, so the children who had already committed and made a portion of their payments could still partake in a fantastic experience and represent Portsmouth Public Schools. The experience was so wonderful for the children, many of them would like to represent Churchland High School and Portsmouth Public Schools at the 2016 Orange Bowl event in Miami, Florida during our upcoming 2016 winter break. I provided my students and their parents with the cost for this event, and in total, not including myself chaperones, travel cost to Florida, or additional meals, it would be a minimum of seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars for the thirteen students who would like to attend this event. Unfortunately, due to finances, several children have already learned that they cannot partake in such a wonderful experience, but on the other hand, other students have been given the okay by their parents in spite of the fact that their parents will not be able to attend due to finances. Several of the students have discussed partaking and fundraisers to help assist with the costs, and their first one will begin during the first week of March. If there is any way that the students can receive some assistance so all of the Center of Excellence Dance students who would like to go could attend this year's Orange Bowl event, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Melissa Morris and Ms. Brianna Horn.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, Dr. Bracy, school board members, and all who have gathered here this evening. In 2014, the Center of Excellence for Visual and Performing Arts Dance Program was directly commissioned by World Strides to perform at the Orange Bowl in Orlando, Florida. The dancers were unable to come up with the necessary finances for the event and were not able to attend the bowl game. We were told we were not allowed to do certain fundraising events through the school, nor were we allowed the, we could not receive the financial aid to attend the trip since it was optional. In 2015, the Center of Excellence for Visual and Performing Arts Dance students were once again invited to perform at a bowl game in Orlando, Florida. Though the Russell Athletic Bowl was considered a small-scale game, it was still not cost-efficient for all the dancers or their families. Some dancers, such as myself, were unable to attend this event due to the lack of financial assistance.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, school board members, Dr. Bracy, and all who are assembled here. I'm a parent, the only parent who went to chaperone the girls, who was able to somewhat afford it, but I wanted my child to have the experience to go. Churchland High School is a Portsmouth Public School, as well as Woodrow Wilson. And after I read the past Sunday paper, I became a bit upset to learn that they were recognized and we weren't. And seemingly, you know, they received special treatment. I would like you all to just consider helping us and, you know, providing assistance to allow us to go to the Orange Bowl to represent our wonderful city, our beautiful school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Parent. I think we need to clear up some misinformation. I think when Woodrow Wilson came and presented at the invitation of city council, and the band director said they were short, like nine thousand, and I think the mayor and his goodness of his heart said that maybe we can help retire that debt. But then we all had a discussion, and we said it would be up to the schools to continue to fundraise until their deadline, April thirtieth, to see exactly how much they could raise before they came to the school or city council for the money. That was as of our meeting Monday night. So we, because we did not want to do what is happening now, when you do that, you open up a can of worms. And normally, the band or whomever, the boosters, they raise the money and whatever, because all the schools want to go someplace. So that was a final resolution that the school board nor the city council would put up the nine thousand, that it would be up to the band to raise it, and then, of course, at the end, if they're a little short, we would certainly make sure that the bills are paid. So I want to make that clear, and certainly, I think it's wonderful that Churchland participated, and when we can get it on our next agenda, I certainly would like to have the students ... get it on our next agenda, I certainly would like to have the students come so we can recognize them too.
Yes.
For being at the Gator Bowl.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did I clear that up?
You did.
Was that the result of the meeting?
Yes.
Yes. So, I wanted to make that clear, that we're certainly not going to make any difference in the schools.
Correct. Mr. Lamb.
Thank you Chairman Bridgford.
That's okay.
Chairman Parent, excuse me. I am a slow learner. The speaker did mention that they had a fundraiser kicking off the first week in March. I would appreciate if we could find out when, where, how, what that fundraiser is, for information purposes, at least for myself.
So, loaded.
She can tell us where the fundraiser is.
The first week of March, we're going to start with a pre-order catalog called Thirty-One. Then, once that's done, we're going to try to do that for about a month. Then, we're going to try pre-orders through Party Light. And hopefully, once the weather gets warmer, the kids are going to try to do some car washes and candy sales and, of course, after-school activities. And we're just going to try to expand from there and see what fundraisers work best and continue with those fundraisers. I know previously, they wanted to do a GoFundMe, but we were told that that wasn't allowed to take place through the school system, so we didn't move forward with that fundraiser when we were preparing for last year's bowl game. So, this year, we're going to try to start fundraising with pre-sale orders with companies such as Thirty-One and Party Light and stuff like that, candles, and then, we're going to do car washes and stuff once it gets warmer.
Reverend Patillo.
Thank you Chairman Parent. Dr. Bracy, just a couple of questions. The first one is, do we have, currently have a policy in place in reference to the budgeting and planning of trips for schools?
We don't. As far as specifically, what are you asking, what type of fundraising?
Yeah, I just think personally, it should be some type of policy in place that will ensure or cover how trips will be paid for before they actually go, to kind of alleviate the problem we just had with Wilson. And I do see how it could seem unfair that even after the fundraising, if we have to still cover the remainder of the balance, and you have other parents and robotics and the dance teams to have to cover their own bills, it should be a policy that's equivalent across the board for everyone.
Right. Well, in response to that and what has taken place with Wilson, that's one of the things that we're going to put in place to make sure that the principals know that as they plan the trips, they need to make sure that their fundraising efforts are where they need to be before they even begin, because if they get to a certain date where they realize that they can't reach their goal, then they're going to have to cancel the trip, because we don't want them falling back on us to cover that. Yeah, so that's something that is already in discussion and already being worked out as we speak.
Thank you. Reverend Plonely.
So, to follow up on Reverend Patillo's question, does that mean that as of now, Dr. Bracy, the individual schools make up their own rules? Because I kept hearing what they were told, and they were nice by not giving us names, because I definitely wanted to hear who told them, but I don't know whether that's appropriate or not. But I definitely want to understand and be clear. Principals have that type of autonomy to pretty much say whether or not they are going to support or what a fundraiser is, and is it certain rules within the particular building that relate to that?
I think as far as the fundraising, they leave that to the advisor, and what they do, they share with the principal what type of fundraisers they're going to have, and they lay out the whole plan leading up to the event. And then, they'll have the opportunity to go ahead and start the fundraising efforts. The principal, if a group comes and says, "We want to take a trip," what they'll be required to do is to basically give them the itinerary of not only the trip, but how the fundraising, how is it going to be funded? Because the school can't afford to do what we're not able to do, is to cover that out of their general fund. So, it's going to be up to the groups to actually show how they're going to do it, and you have to give them the chance to do the fundraising, to be able to see if they're going to be able to sustain where they need to go.
And as a policy committee member, I do agree with Reverend Patillo, because indeed, I feel bad, and I know you all do as well, when we sit here and hear that, that kind of disturbs all of us to hear that persons were left out and persons were unable to go, and then they see an article like they saw on Sunday that really had more sides to the story than what they read. And that was kind of, I guess that disturbed all of us Sunday. But I'm definitely concerned that parents and students probably had to go through that emotion, because indeed, the school board, we're here for the students. And I like the way in which our vice chair addressed the matter, because we indeed do not want to leave anyone out in the near future.
Yes. Mr. Nettles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Landrow, Ms. Morris, and Ms. Horn, I certainly want to apologize to you. And what I'm apologizing for is that students in our Portsmouth Public Schools were exploited in the newspaper. People use that as their primary source of information, and the story wasn't substantiated. It's the exploitation of children to sell newspapers, okay? And when people use the Virginian Pilot as their primary source of information, that's a pitiful thing, okay? Because they said that they would do anything to get a story now. They don't care if it's substantiated or not. So, that's my apology to you. Everyone else has told you that we're going to look out and address it in a policy manner, but it's just a matter of a corporation trying to make money on children's backs and sell newspapers and cause upheaval. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Ty Muttlow.
Good evening Chairman, excuse me. Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, and the rest of the Honorable Board. I want to first by thanking you last year to understand the degree of where we need STEM. If these kids from our robotics program didn't demonstrate that this year. Also, we do get a lot of grants, which helps our children. STEM get a lot of grants to help our children go out. They've made five trips this year, and they've represented Portsmouth at the utmost. I've seen other children up where we participate do not behave nor act like our children did. We should all be very proud of that. Secondly, Mr. Douglas, he is the face of our robotics program right now, because he's the one that travels with all these students everywhere they go. He is not only a teacher, but he's a mentor. He teaches these kids not the mathematics, the science, but he teaches them how to be productive citizens when they're away from home, which is all we can ask of a teacher. It's not just about reading and writing, it's about being productive citizens. Next, our parents. I commend our parents, whether they stay at home or they travel with the kids when we go up to these competitions. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of effort. It's the pride that we take in all our kids, whether it's my child or another child, to watch these kids interact where they're going. It's an awesome sight. And hoping next year, we can do better, but right now, I'm about as proud as I can be out of our Portsmouth students, and the citizens need to be just as proud of them. They make all of us look good regardless of what happens in the news. The traveling situation, if I remember correctly, last year, Ms. Whitaker brought up the fact that our gate receipts needed to help some of these clubs within the schools before they came to the board. I know there seemed to be question about the amount of dollar receipts. Maybe we need to go back and figure that one out. And if this football team or this basketball team gets to travel, these other groups should have the same luxury. These gate receipts need to be split fairly within the school system. There are events that happen that you don't get a chance to get fundraising for. For example, if we qualify for Worlds, we're going to know at the very last minute, and that's a trip to Lexington, Kentucky. There's no fundraising time in B.J. So, we do have situations where something happens where you don't have that time. But I would like to see some of these groups, whether it's the dance, the robotics, whatever the case may be, treated as equally as our North Carolina basketball team, who seems to get all the accolades, or our football programs, or our sports programs, because they are just as important as anything else that we do within the school system. I hope when budget time comes, I know it's going to be difficult again. We need the STEM program to stay where it is, especially in the elementary and the middles, because we need those kids to be interested when they get to the high school level. It's very, very important. But I do want to appreciate and let you know, I appreciate all the help and hard work that you did last year's budget, and I feel for you coming for this year's budget. And I know that you do the best for our students, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nettles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Muttlow. You indicated the difference in the role model and teacher, and I appreciate you bringing that point out tonight, okay? And where other teams, their behavior lacked where ours was superior. And I just want you to know that people do take notice of that, and they do take notice in the hotels when you're there, where kids are from and where they're not. A few years ago, we were in Charlottesville for a funeral. Texas Christian played UVA in football that week. The Texas Christian men's football team is probably the most regimented and polite group of young men I've ever seen in my life. At the same time, there was a girls' soccer team from Morgantown, West Virginia, I won't mention the institution, and all heck broke loose. It was two entirely different situations. I mean, these young men and women, you know, the training squad and all, they had to muster across the parking lot and march into breakfast and held the door for people, yes ma'am, no ma'am, yes sir, no sir. That is noticed, and these young men notice it when the role model becomes a role model. So, they're well on the road to becoming productive people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nettles. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kathy Harrell.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Parent. I'm a Portsmouth Public School bus driver, it's known as Plumley, not Plum, Dylan, and she's a Portsmouth Public School bus driver too. We were here last year, and we had asked for a raise, and we also asked for some respect from our administration. We asked for two things, and we got a raise, and we thank you so much for that. But what we're getting right now is a lot of chaos and a lot of sabotage. And last week, I was here, and I passed out a new procedure that was given to us about extra runs, and then I was told it was a waste of time, but it's really not a waste of time, because these Portsmouth School Bus drivers that are out here doing their job are the ones that are being reprimanded. They're the ones that are out there doing double runs, working late. We're here early in the morning before anybody gets to work, and we're here late at night after everybody leaves. When you get an extra run, the stipulation is that you have good attendance to get that. But we're being punished if we take a sick leave day, if we take a personal day, we only get one personal day a year. Even if you take a half a day, or most of us, you know, we have, might have doctor's appointments, and we'll take that during our break in the afternoon. But if we miss any portion of our run during the day, the morning or the afternoon, then we're being punished by taking away our extra runs. And those runs are assigned to us, you know, they ask you if you want to do it, you make up the left and rights, meaning the directions on where you're going. And the people that are out there rolling around most of the time are the people that are working the hardest for Portsmouth Public Schools for transportation. And last year, it was just a mess, you know? This year, it's even worse. You know, it's, we are short drivers, there's probably about ten to twelve drivers out every single day. Could be drivers that are out on temporary disability or whatever the issue is, I don't know. But by putting this procedure in place, if they were just following Portsmouth Public Schools' policy on how to deal with people that have absenteeism, we wouldn't even been in this pot in the first place. Also, they're not even following their own procedure. Some, the zone lot leaders do what they want to do, they will, you're supposed to be suspended for two days. This is what the policy reads real quick. It says, "Drivers who call out sick, call out for any portion of the day, will not receive additional runs for the day or the day after, or the next assigned run if no run is scheduled that day after." So, you're supposed to be punished for two days, but they'll punish you for one day, take your run away for one day, you know, because it's convenient for them. So, they're not even following their own policy, but it takes money out of our pockets, because we only have 6.50 hours a day that we're usually rolling on the road, and some are a little bit longer because of the distance, and then we have the extra ones. Portsmouth has great programs, you know, you've got SOL programs, you've got, huh? There's so many programs, and we're the ones that get them there. And what they're doing is they're suspending us because somebody didn't come to work for that day. I mean, we had a driver, she's been here the longest, forty years, forty years, she was out sick, she had a doctor's note, and they still took her athletics away, even though that was assigned to her. And that's just not even fair. It's not right, it's not fair across the board. I don't hear, I heard last month, they were talking about teachers, and how many substitute teachers are on the books? I think it was like 160.
Excuse me, you have thirty seconds.
I have thirty seconds for five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, also, you guys voted last year for School Bus Appreciation Week, and we didn't get appreciated once by our office. Nothing. Thank you.
Reverend Patillo?
I'm sorry, one moment, Ms. Harrell. Just as a member of the Transportation Operations Committee, we are reviewing the transportation policy. And one thing that as a board member, I do require, and I appreciate all that you all do, and all the board members express that, but I'm also one that's very stringent when it comes to accountability on both ends. And I heard you say that some things are worse this year, and some things are worse, which includes the attendance of a lot of the bus drivers. And I'm also asking that Ms. Dr. Bracy and Mr. Steele, they present a report for the board in reference to the attendance. It is difficult to look at the overall attendance, and the one bus driver you spoke of, it's difficult to change the policy for that one person when it's being abused by a lot of others. And so, we are looking into it, we want to make sure that everyone's treated fairly across the board, and I think of the students first. And when we don't have drivers for different reasons that don't show up, students are left at bus stops for 45 minutes. left at bus stops for 45 minutes, or to get to schools 45 minutes to an hour late, and I just want to assure you that we are looking at the policy to make sure it's fair, but I'm looking at it on both ends, want to make sure that everyone's being held accountable for what they're supposed to be doing. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Nance?
As the other member, I echo what Reverend Patillo said, and I think that we need to have some standardization, we need to have some management on the street with radar guns and cameras and stuff like that to be perfectly fair. Tonight, on my way here, I was behind a school bus, Portsmouth Public School bus, who scraped two tires, turning a curve, well, Portsmouth to Portsmouth, right there where Liberty Tax is, and the junk place, clocked him at 47 miles an hour and lost him in the 35 mile an hour zone. So, we do need some continuity, absolutely. And we do need some enforcement, and we need fairness. I have no problem when people are consistently fair, instead of being fairly consistent, okay? I want to get, get rid of the fairly consistent. I want to be consistently fair. And sometimes fair means firm, okay? And I, Mr. Steele knows what I'm saying. He knows that in other municipalities, in other school divisions, they do have radar guns, they do have cameras, correct, sir? And there is documentation, at least once a month or once a quarter per bus driver. So, I hear what you're saying, you want to be treated like a professional, correct?
Yes.
And that's what I intend for you to do.
We have a GPS system.
I intend you to be treated like a professional.
Yes.
I intend for you to be.
Would love to be treated like that.
Consistently fair, but firm.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I did it again, Chairman Parent.
That's all right.
I'll get there.
Okay.
At least I'm not calling you Chairman Williams.
Not a problem. Just call me whatever.
That's fine. I'm glad to have heard from both of our committee members that's on the.
Right.
Transportation with regards to where that is, and I am looking forward to that report when it is coming forthright. I think part of the question, though, here is, I don't think anyone's arguing about fairness or even making that point. I think even bus drivers would argue that there needs to be accountability for those that don't do their task or their job. There's two, there's two things, though, that I've, that I've heard on this, and maybe someone can clarify this up. There seems to be a difference between policy versus a procedural change. Policy, of course, is written, the, the bus drivers have mentioned a couple of times here that this was a procedural change, not necessarily a policy change with that. And then, secondly, I, I think there is some merit to the argument that if you are utilizing time that you have earned, be it sick leave or personal leave, the, you know, you've earned that, and you're using that, and then you're coming back, and then that's being taken away, there's something to that. And especially if we're already short 10 or 12 drivers, allegedly, supposedly, taking away those runs and trying to find other drivers when you're already short, I'm sure already puts more of a, it, it just exasperates a problem already. So, I, I hope this gets resolved sooner instead of later, so I will be looking forward to that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Fleming?
Mr. Chair, and Dr. Bracy, and Mr. Steele. Number one, I listed all three of you because I don't know which person I'm addressing. So, I'm just going to share this with all three of you. I think the morale piece is important. Whenever someone comes to the podium and talks about morale, we should address it. We do not, we know that there is no perfect department in any organization, but when someone says, "I do not feel appreciated," that should become a concern of anyone.
Right.
Who has anything to do with being their administrator or supervisor. And I would go as far as to say that on the day that a resolution is read, that they be made aware that they are going to be appreciated in the board meeting. And also, I know we can not make transportation, put up balloons and streamers, but maybe we can give them some advice as to how to say thank you to people who work in transportation. I don't know a job I've ever had where people didn't tell me thank you. And to be on a job and not hear thank you often.
Right.
I don't know what that feels like, and I'm concerned about that. And then, the other piece that I would have is that I do want to hear on a regular basis, and Mr. Steele, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I do want to hear on a regular basis, how many drivers are needed, how many drivers have been hired, and what we're doing to seek out drivers, because these meetings are public, and the representatives of transportation are normally here, at least one, and they can share with transportation what's going on. And I know we do appreciate you, Transportation. I know we do. We appreciate you. And I guess because I grew up in Portsmouth Public Schools and had some of the best, I know you all are good, but I had some of the best bus drivers in the city of Portsmouth. And because of the way in which they treated us, I do take this very personal when it comes to transportation. And I know that we are very concerned about safety, as we know that is one of the top priorities. But again, I do thank our team members, Mr. Reverend Patillo and Mr. Nance as well, working on this issue. But I want us to really address that morale issue and address the number of drivers needed.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I just wanted to follow up with a statement made by Board Member Lamb, that in the workplace, we all earn sick leave or annual leave. But of course, that, that leave has to be approved by the supervisor, and you have to work your leave for the good of the organization. So, if there's, just, just because I might have three months of sick leave, that doesn't mean I can take it like that. And, and after a certain amount of time, there is such a thing as abuse of your leave. So, and I agree with what Board Member Patillo and Nance said, there has to be accountability on both ends. I certainly appreciate great bus drivers. I see them, I respect them, and I think, you know, if morale is a problem, then certainly some training needs to be done on how to treat people professionally. But at the same time, it's a two-way street. It has to go both ways. And I, I do know that, I know for a fact, Mr. Nance and Mr. Patillo are very much employee-oriented. And they are on this committee, and they report back to us what they see, because they meet with many people, and they get all aspects. So, I, I, you know, last year, you came, and we, we said we were going to try to get the, the money, the raise, so we did that. So, we promised to work on getting, you know, maybe helping to do some things to get the morale up. But we do need you all to meet us halfway, not you, but, but the, the people that are calling in excessively, and, because the kids got to get to school. So, thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Patillo?
And, and I met with you and another driver, I forgot the gentleman's name, with Mr. Steele once before, and I took all of your concerns, and I addressed Mr. Lilly and Ms. Lawrence, along with Mr. Steele, everything that you brought to, that you brought to us. And I was told that you all were giving something for, for driver appreciation.
Nothing, not even a thank you on the radio.
Okay. Well, I, I'm definitely going to double check, that's what we were told.
We did from our parents, so.
And, and Mr. Steele was in the meeting also, so I'm asking Mr. Steele to make sure he, he goes back, double checks to see, maybe they misunderstood my question when I asked in, in the meeting. But you're definitely appreciated, and that was one of the first things that I checked with, was the morale issue as far as, why was it so stringent between, you know, drivers and administration? But I'm, just as passionate as I am about that, I'm passionate about the accountability piece also. But I definitely double check on what I was told, and we'll get back with you with an answer on that.
Thank you. And as a former principal, you know, when the child leaves the house, and the first person that they see is the bus driver, and I always, always talk to my bus drivers that when, if you don't set the right tone, then when they get off the bus and we receive them at school, then if they come off the bus upset because of whatever, or hopefully, you know, happy, then they, the teacher is ready to, the teacher's ready to teach, and the children have a positive day. So, definitely, bus drivers have a tremendous responsibility in the instructional program, because you can make or break a child's day just by the tone of your voice. So, I want you to know that I do appreciate, appreciate bus drivers. And we do have a subcommittee of Technology and Operation, which Mr. Nance and Reverend Patillo are on the committee, and they are reviewing the recommendation that you had given to us, and they will be making a report back to the board, okay? Thank you. Madam Clark?
If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
Good evening, Chairman Paris, or Parent.
Parent.
Vice Chairman Williams, Dr. Bracy, members of the board. My name is Sue Moore, I am a bus driver for the last 14 years with the City of Portsmouth. I want to piggyback off of my coworker on some of her statements. Our sick leave, you know, we take it when we're sick, but a lot of us that do the extra runs don't take our sick leaves, because we don't want to get penalized. Right now, I'm coming to work injured, sinus infection, stress of a parent being placed in respite care, because I don't want to be penalized, or disciplined, or however they want to word it, because I used seven days this whole year because of my, all my actions that I had to take outside of work. We are overworked. I'm always covering at least one extra run with my other runs every day, doubling back to go pick up extra students. We have done a count of what buses are sitting without a driver on those buses, and we average it out to be nine or 12 drivers that we are missing off of buses, which trickles down to the rest of us drivers that were out here working our high knees off to cover these runs, to make sure the students get to school. This penalization for taking runs away doesn't affect drivers that don't do anything extra. They come to work, do their four tiers, go home, come back, do their four tiers, go home. If they're out sick, there's no consequences for them. They might get a write-up. Why would I get a write-up, you know, I'm using them, why should they have a write-up for using their sick time? Why should we be penalized for using our sick time when we are extremely exhausted and frustrated out here? I also want to bring up the fact, the spare buses, I am on a spare bus, because my brand-new bus, that's a year old, 30,000 miles, is now at the dealership, broken. I am placed on buses, spare buses, that are never clean. I was placed on 133 two weeks ago for a day. They had a manual door, which I am suffering from a neck injury that I'm still doing physical therapy for, and I'm highly allergic to mold. When I got off that bus, my neck was killing me, my head was exploding with pressure from the mold that I had suffered all day. I have pictures, if you'd like to pass them around, it's not the best off my printer, but these students, I carry four-year-olds, face are right in, in three to four inches away from the molds that are on the seat. On February 10th, I sent these pictures to my lot leader to let her know the, the condition of this bus, and that bus, as of two days ago, when I checked it, the mold is still on that bus. I went and checked the other spare buses that were in the lot, and I have pictures on my phone showing mold on these buses also. If I was on these buses for a long period of time, I would get a mask, and I would clean those buses. But if I don't know how long I want to be on it, I'm not going to severe, I'm not going to put myself in the position of getting ill again to clean these buses just for one day of run. My permanent bus, I wipe it down at least twice a year with Clorox wipes, ceiling to floor, everything in between. And when there are spills and extra dirt on the bus, I clean it up immediately. That is for my health and the health of the students that are on the bus. If something is not done about these moldy buses, I think I need to take it to the Health Department. I need to let someone know that these four-year-olds that are licking the seats anyhow are now licking the molds off the seats. Holiday pay, that's one of the big questions. I came to a lot of the planning meetings last year for this budget, and I assumed, or I read into the meetings, that the holiday pay for winter break was going to be an ongoing thing. Now, it's being spread around the bus lots, that that is not an ongoing thing in the budget, it was a one-time deal. All those meetings I sat on, I never saw or heard that it was going to be a one-time deal like the spring was last year.
You have 30 seconds.
I see that. So, we need to answer that question, because there is a lot of tension amongst the drivers, not knowing if they're going to get holiday pay next year. Last thing about morale is there is a definite division between Churchland and the rest of the bus drivers in Portsmouth. They got kudos, I don't know what for, on their page, on their, at their lots, for excellent job. Yesterday, during the storms, we, I, you know, horrible storms, no advisement what we should do if the tornado hit us. One more second?
One more second.
When the storm went past Clark, I was sitting at Turnpike in Frederick, I could not see Kroger across the street, it was raining that hard. Nothing about what we should do. But the minute that storm hit Churchland, they got on the radio, "Churchland drivers, pull over immediately, seek shelter." Nothing about the South Side, but Churchland was singled out, that they should take advisement, pull over.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Nance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Steele, that bus is disgusting. And I don't know if it's in city contract, that their city maintenance will maintain them and keep them clean, but it needs to get cleaned.
We'll, we'll check it out.
It's not the only bus, there's a number of buses.
I was getting ready to address that. I, I think that any bus that's unmanned for at least a week needs to be checked or whatever. You indicated earlier that, or somebody did, about lot leaders and whatever, could this Churchland situation have been because of their lot leader being more in tune to what's happening?
Well, both.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, there's three lot leaders, one is out for personal issues.
Right.
The other two lot leaders were in the office, neither, I brought it up, that my phone went off with a tornado warning, take shelter.
Right.
I said that over the radio, they said, "Proceed as caution, with caution."
Okay.
But, you know, nothing was said about any of the drivers on the South Side, pull over, seek shelter.
Well, one thing I'm going to tell you is, when we develop something to bring continuity, it's going to take a while. I'm not going to lie to you. It, it is not a thin document or a thin piece of study that we're doing, okay? And right now, to say about the holidays, the worst enemy that bus drivers have is the rumor mill, okay?
I understand that quite.
And they, they need to just not listen to it. And don't worry about, about it until we get a budget firmly in place, because we don't know, okay? To be honest with you, we don't know. But it does nothing but cause hate and discontent amongst y'all, and it's always something to gripe about. And... And I like, I like when I used to pull across the street at St. Andrews and everybody's happy, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And it's like a festering wound, is what I'm saying. Don't listen to it.
I agree. I'm the one saying, yeah, don't listen to it.
Don't listen to it.
I don't know who's spreading it, but it's, you know, not true.
Send Mr. Steele an email, okay? He knows how to read, all right? If you're concerned about it, send him an email. Don't bug him, and don't worry about it. But you got enough on your shoulders. You set the tone for the day, okay? We all have our jobs in this system, and it's to educate children. But I don't view this as coaching or correction. I would not, I would have refused to drive that bus.
Did you?
Because it's not safe.
Well, I did. The next morning.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Dig your feet in the sand and refuse to drive the bus because it's not safe, okay?
Two mornings in a row.
Then somebody's gonna do something. All right, Mr. Chairman?
Two mornings in a row, I had to refuse.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nance. Mr. Bridgford.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a report on how often these buses are clean? How, and what the rules say they should be clean?
Yes, there should be a proceed, there should be.
There should be, there should be some procedures in place, and if the city is in charge of Steele, I know they're in charge of the maintenance of it, so I'm assuming cleaning would be part of the maintenance. Can we find out exactly what's going on and get a report back from them?
Right. He's got it. Dr. Bracy has it. Mr. Steele has it, okay? Thank you. Madam Clerk. Public comment for Board Agenda Items. Do we have any speakers for Board Agenda Items? All right. Moving on. Curriculum and Instruction Monthly Report. Dr. Anita Taylor, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parrot. Dr. Taylor is coming at this time to share what we are with curriculum instruction for this month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Parrot, Vice Chairman Williams, and members of the board. It is again my delight to give you the curriculum and instruction report for the month of February. From the Office of English, we had 34 inductees to be inducted into a ceremony on February 18th for the newly formed Toni Morrison Chapter of the National English Honor Society. Member in this honor society, membership in this honor society is bestowed on individuals who are selected for their accomplishments in the field of English and in overall academic achievement. Mr. Patrick Rogers, a first-grade teacher at Victory Elementary School, received the Agriculture in the Classroom Grant. The mission of this grant is to integrate agriculture through literacy and educate Virginia's children about the importance of agriculture. We had 60 students to participate in a spelling competition to spell their way to the nation's capital on February 20th. Portsmouth Public Schools had two participants, Mackaya Staten, sixth grader from West Haven Elementary, and Braden Thompson, an eighth grader from Churchland Middle School. The Office of Mathematics had two things to report. We celebrated with the 100th Day of School, and the focus for that day was on 100. And our elementary students celebrated by participating in activities that included collecting 100 items, dressing up as a 100-year-old person, creating posters, 100 minutes, and completing 100 acts of kindness. And those are just a few of the things. And parents also participated in these fun school events. We had manipulative, two manipulative training sessions for our mathematics teachers. The elementary mathematics building specialist participated in one training session, and then the middle and high school participated in another. This refresher training will continue to increase the level of active student engagement in mathematics lessons and provide activities for our new Chromebooks. And we are very focused on trying to make sure that we provide many manipulatives and hands-on activities for our students, and that we increase our instructional use of the Chromebooks and making sure that we are focused there. The Office of Science has already reported today, and you've seen the wonderful demonstration by our robotics team, and we're very proud of them, and looking forward to having future events. And as our coaches, our coach has suggested tonight, looking forward to that state and national championship for next year. Our Office of Social Studies is providing in-class field trips through the Hampton Roads Naval Museum for all of our third-grade classes from February 17th through March 4th. Portsmouth donated a total of $759 to the Pennies for Peace Campaign, and this was money that students raised for this service learning activity in schools, and they will be recognized for pennies for peace in April. The Office of Social Studies partnered with the Portsmouth City Council to offer an opportunity for students to observe the local government at work by allowing students to observe their city meetings and to earn community service hours beginning in March. Jeanne Stith, one of our art teachers at Churchland High School, has initiated an art show with the Portsmouth Arts and Cultural Center to display the works that Portsmouth Public Schools graduates are currently producing years after they have graduated. So these are our, graduated, these are our former art students. Ms. Stith's work will also be on display, and the show will open on March 4th between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. And many of these students will attend the opening and be able to sing the praises of the education they received in the Art Scholars Program here in Portsmouth. The all-city elementary grades four through six course auditions have been rescheduled for this Saturday, February 27th, at Woodrow Wilson High School. I believe we canceled those because of the weather. Mount Herman Preschool recently received two grants, the Active Learning Grant, which was sponsored by the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame, and this will provide onsite educational lessons entitled "Moving Math," and the students will engage in some hands-on activities through various stations that they'll participate in. They also received the I Speak for Trees Grant, and this was sponsored by the Elizabeth River Project. And this is where the park ranger from the Elizabeth River Project will give staff development to the teachers, and then the grant will provide a tree for each student to plant, and they will plant it in a bucket, and then they will care for it, and then they will take it home and plant it in their yards. And then, I mean, they will take it to Paradise Creek on March 17th and 18th and transplant their individual trees there. And students can also take them home if they choose to do that. I have given you a list of ongoing trainings for our school-based administrators in special education. This is making sure that we are continuing to provide the additional support and up-to-date trainings for our special educators there, and you can see the dates and times for those. I wanna give a special commendation and recognition and kudos to Mr. Dean Schleifer, the Director of Technology, the entire IT team, Jennifer Thomas, our Instructional Technology Supervisor, and all of our Instructional Technology Resource teachers, because we had a flawless rollout of our Chromebooks for high school students. This is a very significant.
Very good. Very good.
I wanna thank them for being proactive and making sure that we not only put those books in the hands of our students, but that we're giving our staff the tools that they need to make sure that we are using them with fidelity and that we're able to provide best practices through our instruction with those tools. We are very excited about this new initiative, and we know that it will add depth and more opportunities to our instructional practices than our students can only gain from this. So there's more to come. And this concludes our curriculum and instruction report for February. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Seeing no discussion, we move on to Human Resources Monthly Report. Mr. Scott Ziegler. Dr. Bracy, do you have comments?
Mr. Ziegler will come and share his report.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Parrot, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the board. I'm happy to present this month's Human Resources Report. HR Specialist Crystal Satchel and Shawna Hyman visited Old Dominion University's Teacher Recruiting Fair on February 16th. They visited with 40 potential candidates and interviewed 13 candidates seeking degrees and certification in English, mathematics, the arts, and elementary education. In the coming weeks, we will be visiting job fairs at Norfolk State University, Virginia Wesleyan College, Hampton University, and Elizabeth City State University, among several others. Shawna and Crystal also visited the Joint Norfolk State University/Old Dominion University Higher Learning Center in Virginia Beach to meet with the Director of the Career Switcher Program to discuss the needs of Portsmouth Public Schools in terms of anticipated teacher vacancies and how PPS can assist with placing career switcher practicum students in our schools. HR Associates Miriam Mayner and Misty Burdette attended Aesop Certification Training. Aesop is our substitute management platform, and this training will enable them to more efficiently run our guest teacher program. These newly acquired skills will be put to good use as we continue to expand our core of substitute teachers and improve our fill rate. In fact, since instituting a strategic push to increase the number of substitute teachers, we have seen an increase of three percentage points in our fill rate over the last eight weeks. And Miriam and Misty also both became certified in that software. HR Senior Supervisor Jessica Durin and Benefit Senior Supervisor Sharon Hobbs participated in the annual review of our Employee Assistance Program. This review focused on increasing our utilization rate and programs available and lifestyle workshops available to our employees, and most of that is available to them free of charge. The department submitted the annual Instructional Personnel and Licenseur Report, also known as the IPAL Report, to the State Department of Education. This report outlines the number of highly qualified instructional staff who are teaching in their area of licensure. We are pleased to report that 99% of our teachers are highly qualified and teaching in their subject area. This represents an increase of two percentage points over last year's IPAL Report. And finally, HR Associate Jackie Grant and HR Specialist Shawna Hyman attended a one-day seminar entitled Basic Training for HR Professionals. This training focused on the areas such as the Family and Medical Leave Act, the American with Disabilities Act, hiring and interviewing, and records-keeping, and retention. This training will enable both of them to carry out their day-to-day duties with greater accuracy and efficiencies. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, we move next to the Employee Transaction Report for February.
Mr. Parrot requests the Board entertain a motion to accept the transaction report for February 2016.
Move for approval. Motion. Motion been made. And second, that we approve the Employee Transaction Report for February. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, board members, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. Madam Clerk.
Ishan Anamas.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Budget and Planning and its discussion. Our Superintendent will present the proposed FY 2017 budget. Dr. Bracy.
Before I get started, I just wanna, we always think that when we put together the proposed budget, that the only people that are involved are the members of the finance team, which they are, but also it takes the work of others as we start looking at positions and so forth. And I would like to thank the entire senior staff and cabinet for their work in providing valuable information for us to come to these decisions that we have. Joining me is Mr. Steele, our Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Planning, and we will present this budget to you tonight for review. If you look at the agenda, we'll share our mission, vision, statements, our fiscal year 1617 process, key dates, performance and demographic trends, state and local revenue outlook, statement of needs, budget highlights, and our operating fund, CIP, and next steps. The school mission, as you all heard, Mr. Bridgford did an outstanding job in reading that, so I won't go over that again, but with the mission, you'll see our vision statements and what they include. In our budget process, I'll share some key dates, and with that, on March 10th, we will have our, we'll have the public hearing on our proposed budget, and on March 24th, the School Board will adopt an operating budget and forward it to the city. And on the 29th, our city manager will have the presentation of the city's proposed budget. Little background information with the accreditation, as you all are aware, we had 11 of our 19 schools that are fully accredited this past year. We are working hard to make sure that we maintain and increase that number of our goal to becoming a division that's fully accredited, and we just wanna let you know that we are working toward that goal. This slide shows a snapshot of our SOL summary, looking at the goal. This is over a three-year period. The areas shaded in the goal show that the last year of this trend, 1415, we have increased in our content areas when we probably dipped maybe one or two percentage points in size. But we're pleased with the direction that we're going in those areas, and we hope to keep trending in that direction. This slide here shows you a snapshot of our standards of learning comparisons of the state and similar divisions, pass rates. As you can see, Portsmouth is somewhere in the middle or above some of those that share same demographics as we do. We are behind the state average in some of these areas, some that we're close, but our goal is not to only be at state, but to exceed the state, the state average, and be among the elite. Below that, you see the graduation completion index with the benchmark is at 85%. All of our high schools achieved that, and with that, we have to have this component in order for the schools to be fully accredited, the high schools, and our three high schools were fully accredited. Our slide here on our educational priorities within our budget, you'll see the first being safety. We have instructional assistance, vocational education. From our community engagement meetings that were held over the last month, we surveyed, and safety came out as one of the more prevalent things that the community would like to see, not only in the schools, but the city as well. So with that being said, we wanted to be proactive. We've had, we've had a couple of incidents within our elementary schools, and what we would like to see, as we have in our secondary schools, we would like to see at least security officers in all of our elementary schools. This is a goal that we have, contingent upon funding. We're seeking grants to assist us with that. We are, we are recipients of a grant now that will allow us to add an additional security officer in our secondary schools, and we want to be able to add elementary to that next year when we write the grant. Also, vocational education is, was an area that rated high on the survey. We want to make sure that we get back to our vocational education and make that a focus. We've had conversations with the city and possibly looking at establishing a vocab center. So just to let everybody know that that's something that's on the table, we know that's gonna take time, and we are working with them to come up with a plan where we can make that happen. STEM, we do a lot currently now in division with STEM, but that's an area that we want to continue to increase, and also increase the number of students participating in our first college in dual enrollment programs. Steele.
In the next few slides, we're gonna cover some demographics and statistics and budget
budget numbers. The first slide is titled Local Composite Index, and there's two things that affect the amount of state funding we get, which is the predominant revenue source for Portsmouth Public Schools, and that's local composite index and student enrollment, or what is called ADM. The local composite index adjusts the state funding based on three different components of a locality's economic situation. One is 50% of the value of real property, 40% adjusted gross income, and 10% of taxable sales. You can see in this slide where we're compared against other districts in Hampton Roads that we have the lowest local composite index. So what that does to the revenue per student that is provided from the state, it actually adjusts it to increase that slightly. There are studies, though, that show that the amount of that adjustment is still not sufficient to account for students that need additional resources, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Next slide. Another measure of the challenge that Portsmouth Public Schools has is the number of students that are receiving free and reduced meals. And you can see since 2008, the percentage has increased since, from 57.74% to this year, it's 70.13%. We're basically tied with Norfolk for having the highest percent of free and reduced lunch. Basically, to compare to districts like Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, we have about twice the percentage as those two districts. Next slide. And again, besides LCI, the Local Composite Index, ADM is the other factor that determines how much state funds we get. And you can see there's been a decrease, and over the last couple of years and going into this year, it's projected that our ADM or enrollment will continue to decline. So that is a significant impact when we get close to $6,000 per ADM or student that's attending school. So for, say, 100 students, that's over half a million, 600,000. So that's a pretty significant drop in revenue, just accounting for ADM. Next slide. This is a review of what our revenue sources are for the general fund, and you can see combining state school funds and the state sales tax, about 2/3 of our revenue comes from the state. About 1/3 of our funds comes from the city, and then a small sliver for other funds. Again, this is general fund. Federal funds on this slide is less than 1%, but we do get other federal funds in our grant fund for things like Title I. Next slide. This slide shows that for the local contribution to education, how each of the localities is providing support to the different districts. And you can see in comparing to, again, districts in Hampton Roads, that Portsmouth provides the lesser of the other districts in Hampton Roads. Next slide. This is a summary of the total revenue since the recession of 2008, 2009, and one of the takeaways from this slide is to show that the amount of funding that was given to the schools back pre-recession is still higher than what's being provided even with the governor's budget going into this year. And again, the governor has submitted his budget, our budget is based on that. On Sunday, the House and the Senate released their versions of the appropriation bill. So we still are uncertain exactly what the state revenue picture is going to end up with as the General Assembly and the governor finalize a final appropriation bill. Next slide.
Next, we'll talk about the overview, and with that, we have the full fiscal year 17 support of the 2016 pay raise included. Only half of that was included for fiscal year 16, but this proposed budget will have the full year increase included in it. Also, we have the VRS increase for employer, CESEP raise, rate increase, energy projects, finance payments, this will be the final year for our payment included, local match for the security grant, no pay raise for fiscal year 17. As I mentioned previously, the last raise was received in January of 2016. Healthcare plan for 2017, no increase to employer share. Increases in tutoring and athletic budgets in schools, right sizing of positions based on comprehensive staffing model. In our general fund revenue, if you look at the past four years, you can see where we are with the proposed budget for 2017, and these numbers are reflected from the governor's proposed budget. So that's where we got these numbers from. And where you can see, I want to highlight, and I look at my copy, because looking up there, those numbers are very, very small. But with the city's appropriation, we're looking at the level funding of the $52,400,000, and thus what we are basing our budget on, the level funding from there, and the additional revenue that we will wait to see what the city can do with the priorities that we had mentioned with the safety and any assistance that they will provide for us in our instructional assistance to help with kindergarten classroom reduction. As you all may know, and those of you that don't, the last school year, which is this school year, the board had an initiative to place an instructional assistant back in all of the kindergarten classrooms. So this is part of a phase-in plan that we're doing each year until each kindergarten class has an instructional assistant.
So that was the revenue side. This is the expenditure side, and in the proposed budget, you can see the instruction category is going up. On the administration side, you can also see it's going up. Two of the contributors to that include additional funds for special education as it applies to occupational therapy and speech therapy, physical therapy. Those things, even though it's called administration, the category is administration, health, and attendance. So those types of services fall under administration. Transportation and operations and technology, we really did a scrub on every individual line item as we're going through the budget, and those adjustments reflect a lot of the scrutiny that we gave to each of those lines. We looked at history and things like that to come up with a reasonable forecast of a lot of the costs that are there. If you look at fund transfers, that increase from the previous year is primarily because on that energy finance payment that we did not do this year because we paid in advance one year, we have to pay one more year going into this year to complete that last year of the financing. So overall, we've been talking mostly general fund because that's where most of the revenue is, and that's where we get the local contribution from the city. But the other funds that make up our total budget include the Grants Fund, the Food Service or Cafeteria Fund, the Textbook Fund, the Reprographics Fund. As you know, we closed the print shop a year ago, so that is zero. The Risk Management Fund is a significant increase, and if you note the footnote on that, that is primarily because we're hoping the city approves the school board's resolution to move the health self-insurance into the Risk Management Fund. So what will happen is you're looking at about an $18 million increase, which is the amount we have designated for health benefits for employees, and that will go in the Risk Management Fund, which currently we already have workman's comp and other liability insurance, and we felt that it was more appropriate there, and the city, we're expecting that they'll approve that action.
Excuse me, Mr. Steele, isn't that where the cities, don't they have their?
That's how the city accounts for their self-insurance also. So we're basically going to follow suit with how they're following.
Right, thank you.
Another part of our budget, we have an operating budget, but also a capital improvement plan budget, or the CIP budget. These are projects and their status of projects that are currently, we're in the middle of or have been completed. As you know, this is a multi-year fund, so for those items that aren't completed, it rolls over into the next year. So there's a couple items on here that are not complete, others are complete. The school bus replacement, the orders were placed, and the last notice that we had from, I think the manufacturer, was we're looking at a delivery in April. But those are only ones that are funded. We have a full list as part of your board packet of a five-year project summary, and going into, for our request for FY 17, we do have an initial $1 million for school buses, again, as part of our phase replacement. That buys approximately 11 school buses for our fleet, and the other items that are on our priority list for fiscal year 17 are about $8 million worth of projects. We're working with the city right now to look at funding sources for that, and as I briefed in the working session, we are looking at seeking, and we have sent to the Secretary of Education both the city's and the school administration's intent to participate in the QZAB bond initiative at the state and federal level, which could provide zero-interest loans that go out as far as 25 years.
Our next steps will be our public hearing. While the administration continues to work on the budget based on the school board priorities and more current revenue and expenditure information, our school board will approve the budget and submit it to the city, and will work with the city in finalizing our 2017 budget. Included in your package, you'll have the budget calendar, the complete list for the CIP, position control by year and fund, school allocation formula, and budget by category
That concludes. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Seeing no lights up, we'll go to Mr. Steele, who will deliver the monthly report, budget report. Mr. Steele.
Yes, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy. Good evening, and I present the Budget and Planning Monthly Report. One of the things attached to the report is the summary results from the three joint city schools' community engagement budget meetings. They are posted on both the city and the school websites and attached to this report. As far as the facilities update, on the IC Norcom boiler replacement, the boilers are online and fully operational. Chesapeake Controls continues to monitor and make any minor adjustments if needed. The Churchland High PA system, training with administrative staff, assistant principal, IT and maintenance personnel was conducted on February 2nd. There were additional items, speakers, call buttons, and clocks for the ROTC and Health Class area that were on back order that have been delivered. Installation for those areas continues, and there's some minor troubleshooting continuing with volume control, et cetera, but the system is online and operational. At Clark Support Services, we continue to have issues with temperature balancing in the building, and Chesapeake Controls is assessing the solution for balancing those rooms the best we can. They're developing proposals to remedy with and without major project funding being finalized. There was also a pre-bid meeting this week, or the week of February 22nd, and that's for doing renovations to accommodate CESEP to move into Clark. As part of the improvements for locker rooms at Waters Middle School, air handlers was a problem because they weren't working, so we had to order new air handlers, and they were installed in both locker rooms. The units are operational and the job is complete. As far as other locker rooms, improvements at Waters Middle and Churchland Middle, the ceramic tiling at the locker pedestals is scheduled to begin this week. Pending material availability, Churchland Middle School is scheduled for tiling next week, and each locker room will take approximately one week to complete. The delivery of the new lockers is scheduled for March 28th at Waters and March 30th at Churchland Middle. Installation is to begin immediately upon delivery and take approximately two days per locker room. On the West Haven-Wilson roof projects, the design and specifications have been completed and delivered. Again, as previously briefed, these projects are now considered shovel-ready pending funding On the food service side, following the push of the First Lady, Dorothy McAuliffe, Portsmouth Public Schools Food Service Department, has added alternative school breakfast service models to several schools in the district, kind of like a pilot project. Alternative service provides meals to the students through a distribution method different than the traditional cafeteria service, removing various obstacles associated with traditional cafeteria service that can prevent students from accessing school breakfast. Breakfast participation is made more convenient by serving in such a way that students can easily access the meal. Examples that we are currently using are breakfast in the classroom and grab and go. As you probably know, research shows that students who eat a healthy school breakfast perform better academically and physically, have better school attendance, and demonstrate fewer behavioral issues. Increasing school breakfast participation can alleviate childhood hunger, improve nutrition, and ensure children have a healthy start to the day. And below are schools that were selected for the alternative school breakfast and the success in participation as compared to the previous year. And you can see that IC Norcom went from 25.75% participation for breakfast to 47.92% and increase in participation of, this says 22, but I think the percent's higher than that. Waters Middle went from 35.47% for breakfast to 50%, and Victory Elementary went from 40.49% to 59.17%. Our goal was to increase participation by only 7% to 10% in each of these schools, and as you can see, we significantly surpassed that goal in those three schools. The food services will continue to implement alternative school breakfast service models in schools, looking forward to the same positive outcomes for students, our staff, and the food service operation. In purchasing, purchasing conducted pre-proposal conferences for athletic trainer, request for proposal, and the video management surveillance system, and they also received proposals for the glass repair services and tree trimming services at the end of January. For training and conferences, purchasing manager Tony Canyon and buyer Kathy Dietz and purchasing clerk Nadine Wassman participated in a training webinar titled Evaluating responsiveness of Bids, and a training webinar entitled Wrangling the P3: The Best Practices for Public-Pprivate Partnerships. In transportation, training was set this week for the GPS system, and we're waiting implementation of Here Comes implementation of Here Comes the Bus app that would be available for parents. Once this GPS training is over, our IT department and Synovia, which is the company that we procured the GPS system from, will complete the file transfer from Edge Log and the PPS routing and transportation management software. And that will help getting Here Comes the Bus application off the ground. You have some statistics on accidents. And the equipment, by the way, was installed as of earlier in the month on 128 buses, and they were still waiting 10 in the shop for installation, and that probably may have been done by this time. There's some statistics on hiring of bus drivers. We'll give a fuller report on the staffing and the vacancies at our next report. And a picture says a thousand words, and it was already mentioned before, but there's a picture of the Chromebooks implementation at our high school with students holding the books with a lot of smiles on their faces. And that ends my monthly report.
Mr. Hines?
Chairman Parent, had to take a pause there for a minute. Mr. Steele, good evening. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the budget presentations. Thank you for you and your staff working with Dr. Bracy to get all this put together for us. It does take a lot of time, so I just wanted to say thank you. I want to start with the high school or with the breakfast, the alternative school breakfast. We did it in three schools. And I think I'm reading this correctly, are we going to expand it to more of our schools? Or are we just keeping it with those three schools right now?
That was the intent. We started off with three schools to see how receptive the students in the school would be to this program. It's had a lot of success in other schools and school districts. But there was some reluctance from principals and staff if it would be too much of a distraction in the classroom. So we wanted to start it off with three and kind of see how it goes, and then expand from there.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, and it's a bit of you and it's a bit of Dr. Taylor as well. But talking about summer school locations, to make sure that our students are fed during summer hours as well, have we looked at putting summer school in places where we're allowed to do that throughout the summer? Just a question. I don't need an, you know. Okay. Thank you. And the last question, Chromebooks. I think all of us attended most of the schools during handout. And it was absolutely amazing to see the grins on everybody, on the students' faces. They carried themselves differently. They felt differently. There was excitement and pride and grateful, almost to the, almost great, you know, and I would venture to say grateful, the fact that we believed in them, to put them in their hands, to trust them with it, and to, and just to give them this wonderful tool. You know, I had a student, as they walked past me, I mean, because you're in a building and, you know, nobody really knows who you are, and you really don't want to be seen. You just want to be there. And the students were just like, I can't believe they gave them to us. I can't wait to get, and just that excitement. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for a job well done. And to ask the question, because we did talk about it, how many of our students are participating with Chromebooks? Because I know that we were looking at not everybody getting them for different reasons. But if we have a takeover rate or a handout rate, do we have those available now so that we know how many students have them in their hand?
I kind of thought that you'd asked that question.
I was waiting for it.
So the percentages, first of all, good evening, everybody. The percentages in the high schools are as follows. We have a 72% adoption at Churchland High School, a 70% adoption at, I'm going to get my high schools mixed up now, at Norcom, and a 68% adoption at Wilson. And in talking with the principals, there's a number of reasons that we may not, that the numbers may be the way, fell the way they have fallen. First of all, you've got seniors. They're going to be walking very soon. We're still handing them out as well. So there are still kids coming to the student help desk to get, with their signed document, to get their Chromebook. So I don't think we're done yet. And I really do believe that we'll see much higher adoption rates when we do launch this at the beginning of the next school year.
Can I follow? Can I ask one more? Are we able to keep Chromebooks and carts for students to check out daily?
Yeah, we were talking about, we had a debrief today with our, with the team. And what we landed on was 15-unit Chromebook carts. Because we really looked at, you have at least half of the classrooms that adopt or that wanted the Chromebooks. And I think 15 is a good number. Two of those carts equal a whole classroom if you needed to roll, you know, use them maybe during summer school. So we're looking at those numbers now.
Okay. Thank you.
This is not for just a minute before you sit down. Ding. When I was at, I think it was at Churchland High School, I think we had, I had a conversation with the, one of the personnel there. And one of the reasons, and we were talking about one of the reasons why some of the students elected not to receive a Chromebook. And one is that the parents did not understand the liability. There was, there would be no liability for the parent. They were worried about the fact that if they lost a Chromebook, then they would be responsible. So that was cleared up. In other words, every effort has been to clear up with the parent that there is no risk that if your child takes a Chromebook, that you're responsible. Because we have insurance, we have all of these things. So I think we probably need to go back and see if we can do some, those students that did not receive Chromebooks, because the parents were reluctant to have their child receive one, maybe, maybe having more education for them, because I think it's important. The other thing is that we're talking about a lot of the, well, not a lot, but some of the students that I asked that didn't have Chromebooks said that they didn't have Wi-Fi at home. And, you know, we've said for years, you know, Cox offers a program, and this student said that they didn't know that. And so we need to do some educating with students and parents that there is a program out there for $9.99 a month that you can have access. But there are public facilities, that, public libraries, the community centers, a lot of places, restaurants have Wi-Fi. There's a lot of ways. And I think you and I had talked about the possibility of maybe asking the principals if we could somehow allow students who have assignments that need Wi-Fi to ride the activity bus. But then, as you said the other night, the bottom line is that there are a lot of activities that do not, that they don't need Wi-Fi in order to do the assignment. So I think there's a lot of education, and the more we, the more we roll this out, then I think a better response will hit.
Certainly. And it's a cyclical process, because a lot of the things that you mentioned were actually, have actually been done not only by administration, but teachers actually reaching out to parents saying, listen, you really, and I was really encouraged to hear that teachers were taking that initiative to actually call. I talked to a teacher at Churchland, and she called, like, three of the students, and you've got to do this. And talked to parents, you know. So it is a cyclical process to have people to understand, you know, the different things that are available. And one of the takeaways for me was the commitment by the schools for this particular program.
Oh, absolutely.
And the attitudes. When we went to each of those schools, those staffs were truly amazing in each of those schools. I told the principals and the administrators today that are part of our team.
Right.
It could not have been possible and would not have been as flawless as, without their help. They were amazing.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the purchasing contract. This is the RFP number 857-P-1516, Contract for Tree Trimming and Removal Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This particular contract is for tree trimming and removal services. It follows issuing of a request for proposal. And the proposals were received from three vendors, as indicated. Our consultant for MWBE Transformation Consulting reviewed and evaluated the documents submitted by the offerers. And the RFP evaluation committee recommends a award of a contract based on the evaluation criteria to the vendor indicated, that they satisfied all requirements of the RFP and were determined to be fully qualified and best suited among those submitting proposals. They submitted and completed the required MWBE form, certifying their intent to perform without subcontracting. The award will not satisfy the RFP's MWBE goal of 11% and refer to the attached for additional information. And you can see the evaluation summary from the purchasing manager, the evaluation summary matrix, also the tabulation sheet of the different costs, and the report from Transformation on finding whether the vendors were MWBE compliant to the policy of the school board. At this time, it is recommended that award be awarded to Xylem Tree Experts to provide tree trimming and removal services. The contract will be for a three-year term with two one-year renewal options. The estimated value for the term of the contract will not exceed $50,000.
What is the Board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Board members, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
Eight yes votes, one no. It passes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, abstention.
While you're there, you might as well give the financial report for January.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the, for the January financial report. And I'll point out that our revenues seem to be on track with last year as far as their percentage of the total revenue. On the expenditure side, you'll note that we are exceeding the expenditure rate as compared to last year.
Right.
Something that the superintendent mentioned at the earlier working session. And if you look at the burn rate, that bears it out where you can see the red line going above the previous year's. And also, again, on the last page of the report is, again, a monthly summary of the self-insurance fund, and the balance currently is approximately $1.8 million. Recommend approval.
Motion's made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Board members, please indicate your disposition by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steele. Move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. And before I get into the report, I forgot to share all of the gifts that you all received for school board appreciation. And if you will look at your stations, you will see. But before I do that, all of the gifts were produced by our students enrolled in selected aspects of our career and technical education programs.
There's chocolate in there.
Mm-hmm. As I mentioned, the plants, the boxes of desserts were made in the culinary laboratory at Woodrow Wilson High School. Mouse pads were produced in the graphic arts communications at Woodrow Wilson High School. And just to let you know, these programs are offered to all students attending Churchland, IC Norcom, and Woodrow Wilson.
I need one. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So with the, with my report, we have the Portsmouth was selected by the Department of Education for participation in the Virginia Cyber Camp Program. Students who must apply for the program will participate in a summer program and receive 98 hours of cybersecurity education through a three-week summer camp. And I think we sent you all the press release earlier.
Right.
Before that, and we're very pleased to be one of a few that received this grant. And I think I saw our grant writer who assists at us with that, Dr. Williams, she's present. I want to thank you for what you did.
Yes, thank you.
And you working with Dr. Taylor and the curriculum staff for putting this together. I want to thank you both for that.
Maybe, maybe some board members could go, you think?
Might be able to order the class.
We can order the class.
Yeah. Can't take a slide, though. I will be addressing the Lefco Leadership Development Class on Wednesday, March 6th at 7:00 at their annual education night at the Partnership Briefing Center. Myself, along with Dr. Michelle Woodhouse, Provost of TCC, and Ms. Laura Nelson. Our science coordinator will also serve on the panel. We have the 10th Annual Career Fair is scheduled for March 9th at 4:30 at the Portsmouth campus of Tyre Water Community College. The VSBAs Tyre Water Region will hold its 2016 Spring Network Forum on Tuesday, April 12th at 5:00 at Kellum High School in Virginia Beach. We'll Read Across America Day, it's March 2nd. I will be reading at Douglas Park Elementary School. And I think most of our staff is, will be farmed out to the various schools to participate in this initiative. Our Public Information Officer's report is attached. And last but not least, everybody has touted our rollout of our Chromebooks.
Yep.
But I do believe that I have the best report that will reflect the Chromebooks. You know, not that we're in any competition, but we all like great things.
Right.
And we all will definitely can say that what we did for our students is just amazing.
It is.
And the stories that you've shared, I echo that. But as you all know, one of the initiatives that we're doing is marketing ourselves. Sharing our own good news. And this is a continuation from what you saw at the last meeting, where we're doing videos to show our work, to show the great things that we're, that we have. So tonight, I have the world premiere of our Chromebook rollout.
Oh.
And we have our Oscar award-winning star, Mr. Slepper.
Oh.
Who is, who was participating in this. So he definitely deserves a lot of credit for what he did. So with that being said, I'll let him roll the video.
We are going to make sure that you're able to get to educational things and things that you find useful in your instructional lives. So now let's talk about your device. You'll notice as soon as you opened up your device, go ahead and open your lid, it automatically powers on.
We're actually in the process of rolling out 4,200 Chromebooks to high school students across the city of Portsmouth. The process started about, probably about a year and a half ago with the introduction of the state's e-learning backpack initiative. We did a lot of testing. We brought in a lot of different devices, different brands, different manufacturers. And we found that the Chromebook was really a great fit for us.
A good portion of the resources that we use with our school system are web-based. And being able to send a child home and continue their education and allow them to work independently, Google Classroom is one of the tools that we have at our disposal within the Google Apps for Education world.
Before the tablets came, we started prepping them with Google Classroom. We have access to the kids a lot more. Say if a teacher's absent, you can actually videotape yourself teaching a lesson, and they can actually pay attention to it, do the homework in and turn it right in right then and there.
Using Google Docs has been even an adjustment for me. But we are now moving into using the technology piece, and economics and personal finance is also being taught virtually and online. So it is definitely going to be an asset to our learning environment, especially here at Norcom. We are the technology school, so thumbs up for Portsmouth Public Schools. Our students need this opportunity. They've been looking forward to it.
When I got my laptop, I was, I was shouting my lungs out. I told my mom that we was getting laptops.
Just to have a tablet, a laptop dedicated just for school, it just adds an easier touch to doing my homework, doing a test, turning in a paper.
I think it will introduce people into new ways of learning.
This will make it more fun and interesting to learn and do homework.
Plus getting to communicate with our friends and teachers while doing it, you know, it's really, really cool.
With the Chromebooks, we can, like, look up information that we need.
With the Chromebooks, we can, like, look up information that we need. Some of our textbooks are even on the computers.
We can just put all our work on there, and the teachers can just check it off of there. It'll be good.
It's a pat on the back for us and them, because it's really showing that, like I said, they care, and that they want to see us do better and go further in our education.
I think that is opening up a lot of opportunities for us, and I'm just happy that they trust us with them, and I want them to know that we're going to be able to do our part and keep them safe, and we're going to treat them like they're our own.
Thank you, Portsmouth Public School, for letting us get these computers. And school board, thank you for trusting us with these computers, and I just love this computer. Thank you very much.
We actually upgraded the infrastructure, wireless and wired infrastructure in all of our high schools. So, we got brand-new networks, now brand-new Chromebooks. We're ready to teach.
Board members, your great deed has not gone unnoticed. So, thank you for having the support in us to present this initiative and you granting it. And as you can see, the students and teachers are grateful.
Very much so.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, board members' comments and concerns. Mr. Nance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we need to commend one more person tonight, our Public Information Officer for telling our story and somebody not telling it for us. I've gotten to know Ari a lot better over the last two weeks in working with her and having some meetings with her, and she's truly amazing. And it's probably the best money we've spent. She's on top of things, and once again, everybody who knows me knows I've been preaching this for years. We're telling, finally telling our story. Thank you.
And I will say, echo to that, because since I've been in the board meeting, I think, Ariel, I have about 10 tweets, maybe I have 11 tweets from you already, so I get them every day, and my wife wants to know, who in the world is contacting you? I said, that's Portsmouth Public Schools. She's the, we've got a good Twitter. Thank you. Any other reports need to come before this board? Oh, yes, ma'am. Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Williams. That's okay. I'll punch your leg.
I had said the hour is late, but I do want to thank Dr. Bracy.
Yeah.
For his vision, because when he came on board, he said we had to upgrade the technology because children learn differently.
Yeah.
So, because of his leadership and pushing for this.
Right, absolutely.
And working with city council, we need to thank our council.
Yes.
People that supported this funding for this rollout.
Absolutely.
Because they truly have, and especially our liaisons.
Right.
They have truly pushed for technology. Councilman Danny Meeks and Councilman Mark Whitaker.
Right.
They have been behind this 100%. So, thank you, Dr. Bracy. We appreciate you.
Mr. Hines?
One more thing. I know the hour is late.
One more thing?
One more thing. Happy one-year anniversary, Dr. Bracy.
Oh, that's right.
You have been here a year. Thank you for leaving the snow at bay, because you did come in in a cloud of snow last year. So, thank you for leaving that in North Carolina. That's fine with us. But happy one-year anniversary. I just wanted to say thank you. The year has been fun and entertaining, and we've done a lot of hard work, and I think the energy is gelling and we're moving in the right direction. So, happy one-year anniversary. Let's do another year.
There you go.
All right.
If there is, if there's no further business to come before this board, the meeting is now adjourned.